Recording in progress.
Clicked out like twenty minutes ago. Okay, we're good.
We're good, alright. Today we will call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to Order, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty-one P M. We'll be kind of forum. Old business municipal land use policy, special eventifying.
Howdy y'all. I have brought to you an updated. Originally, we had a already existing municipal buildings and facilities use policy. What I have done today is I have married the buildings and facility policy with my proposed land use policy. So that we just have one comprehensive, hopefully easy to understand policy. And then I had taken the special events information that I formerly had in my land use policy. And I have separated that into its own policy. So now we have the building facilities and land use policy. And now, and as well as a special events policy. And then what I went ahead and did is we had an existing building use application. I have now transformed that into the building facilities and land use application so that anyone looking to use any room of the municipal center, the library, the old church, but as well as any municipal land such as recreation fields or the municipal center grounds, it's all just on one application. And you'll see on that application, there is like a pretty flesh out questionnaire, but that would only be applicable to larger functions. Right now, my biggest question about that was I have those larger functions set at fifty or more attendance. I was wondering if this this yes or no portion should be up to maybe a hundred guests, or if we find it appropriate for fifty. But I'm also just looking for any feedback in general on any of these documents. Yeah, thanks for giving them a little look sober.
It's gonna hard work. You know, stuff. Yes, I'm.
For anybody listening, I've had oral surgery, so it's difficult for me to talk. I apologize if it's hard to understand what I'm saying. This is really, really good. Taking this role by the horns. I saw a few things in here. Reading it like critical reading for somebody looking for a loophole.
Of course, yeah.
On C. I think you could just wait, carry in, carry out. That that's the expectation everywhere. But certainly, if other people feel differently. These are just suggestions. On D. I think it's really wise how you put this exception to the rule. Is that pencil required to be that part?
It was me. That was Cameron.
I'll give you credit.
Appreciate it. Sorry, Cam.
My thought would be is maybe to change that to rules could be more restrictive for a specific event or so for whatever reason, if there was an event that it would be inappropriate for animals to be there, that that event could say no animals. Alright. Something or whatever, if it's if it was a group of people allergic to dogs and they wanted to say no dog, whatever. So maybe just changing that.
Yeah.
For G. I can just hear the teenager. Well, I wasn't in a tent, an R V, a camper, a private vehicle. I was in a car park, you know, I would just say camping is not.
Okay.
I was in a commercial vehicle.
On L. Where it says designated for hunting for fishes. I think the way that's written, it indicates that there we have like land that is specifically for hunting and nothing else. So maybe say on municipal land specifically designated as available for hunting.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't think we have any land that is, this is for hunting. And then on part three. C. The word for. When I read this, it runs itself to me that the town manager or their designation designate is responsible not only for the scheduling, but also for the supervision and proper care. But I don't think the intent is, is that if somebody's using a space, that it's still the town manager responsible for the supervision of that event. So I'm not sure what's trying to be said there.
Yeah, I agree. I think it should, the owner should be put more on the applicant rather than the town manager or their designate. I can, I can wordsmith that.
I interpreted this as the town manager or their designate basically is holds the authority to say, hey, this is getting out of hand, we're done. Or you know what I mean? Like
Yeah.
The inevitable authority of saying this needs to stop rests with that, but maybe I interpreted it wrong.
Yeah, I think we can get more specific on the wording there. I can see how I can fix that.
So if that's what you want to say, then it would be as well as the canceling of any event at any time. If that's what you're saying, or if you're saying that you're responsible for ensuring that appropriate supervision is provided. Or it's one make this sense.
Yeah, you are.
But whatever that is in there, if you don't want. That was great. I, I think it's fabulous the way it's all put together.
Thank God.
And I almost wonder if maybe a less than fifty number. You might it might be a good idea for people to have to stop and think about all those.
Yeah.
Times. I wouldn't be opposed to reading twenty-five people or more. But again, if other people think that hiring is better notes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you, you think you want to change the attendees?
What did the rest of the board think? I had only put fifty there because in my little um chart on the special events policy, um that was just like one to forty-nine people would get the fifty dollar permit permit fee and fifty dollar refundable deposit. So I just thought maybe some consistency would be good there, but I, I would be willing to bring it down, bring it up. I
My thought is twenty-five because that's the library occupancy. There's questions like who's going to be in charge of managing parking.
Yeah.
And traction then it's just, yeah.
I don't see why not.
Interesting. This goes into the special events policy.
Yeah.
So like, it's like, so we do the, or the farmer's market rents the area out front. Um, and I typically just charge that one time fee for the, because it's through the summer.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, but how do you set a number of attendees for that?
I, I mean, I'd say for that where most of the customers that are coming through are not staying for the duration of the event. Perhaps it's dependent on how many farmer's market stalls there are and how many people would be.
I was thinking kind of the same thing, like, I mean, at any given time, there's no more than fifty people really there. So, I mean, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't so restrictive that we're trying to
Yeah.
Have them estimate how many people are going to show up.
Right, right.
I, I think you could say what you anticipate and it becomes super popular and we start getting a hundred people a week. Very probably.
Yeah.
Or something like that, you could just make it educated.
Yeah.
That's in there.
What about with like the big criminals, the human made, is all that stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, neither?
Yes.
It's about to inject it. Looking at our
Well.
It's usually like doing it to tell.
For the community events, if, if it's a town sponsored event.
That's another thing.
Which is community this, so. I mean, depending on how community events committee sets up like the community day thing with vendors, if they charge to raise money to raise funds for the following years or whatever. That's a town sponsored event. So, I mean, we obviously still want to have stuff written up and probably the committee fill out the application just to have it official, but I think because it is a town sponsored event, it's a little different than
There are exceptions.
Somebody throwing a big parade in town that isn't affiliated with the town.
Right. Right.
So we want to take the time to amend this. I think very bad. Yeah.
Yeah, I think let me, let me make the changes that we talked about this meeting. Um, I'll bring them to you guys. You can get it.
Okay.
There's also um inconsistency with one property with the hyphen.
Yeah, Cam, Cam corrected.
Yeah, I corrected some and I must not hit all of them.
I'll, I'll get through that.
Who is that? Which? Stop being with his topic for a parade.
Which one?
Under special events, these one maybe couple. Yeah.
Special that's seen as well, there's a land use she's talking about, but they'll just put under special.
There's some deals.
I'm going to get rid of the headings. I just want to say.
Yes, Anna.
Where's the board feel that? I believe when you saw this discussion there was discussion that we, there was policies or then um, well, they're seeing a four ordinance. I'm thinking it might be a good idea for us to start thinking about what do we have to do to then take this document to be an ordinance, so therefore it can go into those, to the town, that's town meeting.
Would it just be some language changes at the beginning and end of the document, or is there?
There'd be some language changes that we'd have to look into. Um, I also when you have an ordinance. Oxford County can then enforce those ordinances, but that may also, I'd have to make contact with Oxford County because for certain things you'd have to contract with them. So there may be an added cost to make sure that they would enforce it and issue those citations or whatever, because it's still a civil issue, but, um, so I'd have to do some research, but I don't think it's I don't think this is too far off from where it needs to be. Just some slight tweaks.
Mm-hmm.
Then if it does go on, on to the uh the town meeting warrant, we'd have to, part of that, anytime there's an ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. Where we're having the public hearings for the budget before what, I, I believe there's a, you have to have an ordinance. If you're doing an ordinance, you have to have the town meeting between no more than thirty. But no less than like fourteen days prior to the meeting. So we may have to have an added public hearing, which isn't a big deal. But uh, if we have a couple of them, we can do them all at the same time and have them all during that that same public hearing. I don't think there's an issue with that. As long as they're all ready, because we're going to be looking at, I'm hoping shoreline zoning, building permit ordinance. And then if we could get this before town meeting. That could be another one.
Yeah.
But I, I agree. I think the intent is to get the policy started so that we at least have something in place and then try to graduate it over to a proposed ordinance so that there is some teeth in it and we actually have ground to stand on when people are not following the rules.
Should I send this to N M A for their review? Or do you think I should do some further work for, before that happens?
I think it would be worth it.
Yeah, I can do that once I make those changes we just talked about.
So I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, we're in the main, we have our report outs. So I have budget committee and Peter. Yep, you guys happen to be here, so you want to talk about the?
Sure. Uh, we've had several meetings lately. Talk about financial management and more recently first budget. We have a good committee. Everybody show up and then the difference about the finances, the uh, review of the subject went very quickly. Good progress. There's a lot of increase. Um, but I think a lot of it's checking the cash out. And and also some increased revenue. Overall, we, we didn't see many different choices, particularly with the salary increase. Helped with very different increase in the paving budget, which we support. Basically catching up. Inflation, but we did a set figure around three hundred and seventy thousand a year. And three to four years, we have another hundred thousand. And so, uh overall, they're going to have a big impact. Tax rate, this is very low minor increase compared to year passed, but of course that depends on putting three hundred thousand twenty thousand. Pay for some of the expenses. So that's a, the caution with that. And run out of fund balance, it may be a better chance to tax rate for less help with rebuild work and people, people and houses. And in the back place. Or in the future, this is the right move this time.
Yeah, it sounded, it sounded pretty stupid. I watched the video after the fact. I prayed I couldn't make it, but uh, it sounded like you went with the Tom Attakers uh, opinion on most everything, so.
Well, we increased, but absolutely decided that they uh it recommended that the on-call rescue people get more money because they're actually cheaper than people out of, they're going to go out of town.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're perverse if you wanted to people on calls, just in the bound. And what, but that's minor and the range scale thing, but still important.
Yeah. Yeah, any thoughts on that? You were more involved in me and since you were there, so.
Well, when we get down to the new business number seven, I'll hit on that a little bit.
Okay. I'll do my others. The board committee uh, decided to go with commissioners uh, recommendations and they're going to pave from the top of High Street to the Culver by the cemetery. And then uh, along Buck Hill uh, for, where the paving stop there down in Gary Bennett's place. Is there anything else in that, I think?
No, that's the plan. That, that's the plan. I mean, I have the R F P written up. I need to put it up. I'm going to publish it this week and send it out. I'm pessimistic about being able to do all that work or what's in the budget, but we'll see what happens when it comes back. Um. I wouldn't be surprised if it ends up being another split year kind of project like what happened on East Buckfield Road and Bear Pond Road, because it's similar and, and stretch and it's I just with the, I mean, I'd be, I'd love it if it we could do it all in one budget, but we'll see once the bids come in. I think last time for the two projects we did over there, it was a little over eight hundred thousand, so it ended up having to come out of two budgets. But that's the next on their um hit list, so to speak.
Yeah.
I think the focus is through streets, so the, the through streets and then working their way out to the local roads, uh, you know, what we call the back roads.
Yeah.
So with East Buckfield Road, Bear Pond Road being done, finishing up Paris Hill, North Buckfield, now they can start looking at those, those other areas that are lacking. There was discussion about potentially looking at roads that if we can't get to them for three or four years, maybe exploring the option of reclaiming the roads. Leaving them as, as gravel for that short period of time until we have the money to do those projects, because honestly, sometimes a reclaimed road or a gravel road is better than some of the conditions of some of the roads we have in town, so. That may be something that they discuss next year. But that was pretty much the bulk of the, the meeting that took place.
Yes, Peter.
I always want for saving money on roads, which you probably all know. I think it should be considered. This is a policy question. Uh, maybe some roads should go back and grow. Cost analysis these days, the the savings so incredibly. And you remain a lot more maintenance, road grader, assumed road grader works, you bought a new, you new year.
We bought used one, yeah.
So, uh you know, I just have to get in the habit of the maintenance. Labor costs in the premium scale, I think that would be in the budget, and you'd be very happy to see the labor go up in the summer to me in Bain Road. Pay some money on on paving, but of course that can be controversial, the return of the growth of gravel. So guys, no glory, right? I'll take the call for it.
I'll have him call you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah. And it looked good. I looked through the library books. Look great. It's nice to have one well in advance. You know, prepared to hear your past years. We understood.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Cam. And my final report would be on the schools and there's a little report in there that Aaron was trying to send over. And uh, what I took away from that was uh she is concerned about the budget. As we all should be. Uh, apparently they've lost some grant funding. So that's gone from two million down to forty thousand, so.
It gets the subsidies, the subsidies they get from the state.
Yeah.
Last year, they got a little over two million. And the superintendent had reported to the school board that this year they're only getting, they got an additional two million last year over what they get to your car. And this year they're only projecting an extra forty thousand over what they got last year. So that's a significant drop. So depending on how much their budget grows. If it doesn't correlate with the it's, it's going to be more taxed and assessed, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
Less subsidy, more taxpayer money.
Yes, Judy.
Do we have any idea how many children are in the school?
I don't know.
Instead of still going down, it was for a while.
I can't remember what they said.
Um. We could certainly find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We spent a lot, I think.
Yeah, and I know the superintendent told us when they were here, but I do not recall.
Yeah, she gave us a ballpark. And, and the, the problem is the, the the reports online, it's for the full district or the full R S U. So it doesn't have it broke down that I could find by
By school.
School by school. I think this year, district wide, I saw an increase in enrollments, but it's still less than what it was two years ago. So.
I'm wondering if it didn't increase, then what are the portable units for, you know?
I would encourage people to go to the school board meetings.
I think that's it.
Um, because I mean, well, I'll let you keep going through your report.
Okay.
Because I think it, no, it doesn't mention it. During that meeting, we had talked about the sixth grade thing and they had, they had uh what do they call it? Not a round table, but they, they had people, they had an open house basically to talk about all that. And spaces, space associated with programming is, is the biggest issue. They get, they need more space now than they needed fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, and that's the biggest issue that they're running into. Um, they're doing the purpose of the portables going forward, looks like it's the commitment of the R S U from, for committing to all-day pre-K. Or all, all day, all week, pre-K, full-time pre-K, whatever. I, I don't remember the exact words they utilize, but um that requires more space, obviously, because you've got more kids in, in pre-K. Which is kind of pushing that decision to want to move kids over to the high school. And they do, they are doing an architectural study. I think they're currently talking or looking at proposals from various firms to do that. Which will give them an idea of what they can utilize that space for. In the meantime, that's going to take a long time, so I anticipate that we'll be using the portables for foreseeable future, but we'll see.
And I see she mentioned keeping two full-time nurses. They went from four to six during COVID and they'd like to keep those nurses on. Certainly the job, the school nurses changed since probably any of us were in school. So I, I can't assume, but you know, what they need or don't, but I can certainly see where they might need some more help. Uh, I don't know. I think those are the two babies I saw in there.
They're still working on contract negotiations for bus drivers. I think that was in there too.
Yeah.
No decisions have been made. I think as they're working on their budget, anticipating or trying to keep those two positions, now the COVID funds have, have gone higher. It's it's also affecting contract negotiations too, because they're trying to keep money as tight as possible in order to be able to do that, but let's see.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating that my budget's going to come in lower than what the school budget's going to be.
Yes, Judy, yeah. Curious, we always get a report in the town report, births and deaths. Where do we stand there? They're taking a head through school.
I'm almost positive Brittany put that information in last year. I'd have to double check the report, but I thought she did birth, deaths, marriages.
She did, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a number as far as, yeah, but I, I'm pretty sure she put that in the report last year. And she'll do this, she'll do the same this year.
I'll give you some idea of what the school might be going.
Yeah. Those are my three.
Well.
Okay.
So the community events committee meets on a regular basis. I've um was in contact with members and people know it's clear that uh, meetings need to be posted at least seven days in advance and that some form of minutes need to be taken and gone handed in. So the people who so that's understood and um, from the folks in the committee that I've spoken with, um there's a lot going on, a lot being talked about, but perhaps most importantly, um The community day this year, the planning has. Has started and people have accepted roles and tasks in that, so. Looks good for that happening for our community this year. The planning board. It's been a little challenging to get in touch with folks at the planning board. They're very busy, but there is a meeting tomorrow night. And I will be attending that meeting and making sure that. Folks know about posting seven days in advance and making sure that minutes are. Are being handled in. So those are my two.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
When you, did I hear you randomly? That there would be a regular month or week? Do you know what day that is gonna be?
Posted as the sec- third Wednesday of every month. That's what it says in.
Yep, it's the third Wednesday of every month at six P M. And community events committee is now the second Tuesday of every month. At six P M.
Okay, I was asking about the community event. What was that one?
Second Tuesday every month.
Okay, thank you. And if that works, it'll change.
Yes, Judy.
Read, read the, I don't know if this is appropriate now, but read the planning board. When I was on it thirty years ago. Our biggest thing was strong. To control explosion of housing. I think things have changed now. I just, I don't know, you know, people realize that.
Thank you.
I can go next. I'll start with the least eventful committee, which would be the ordinance development committee. We have a whopping zero members. On the ordinance development committee, so if anyone is interested in joining. Um, I'll remind the public that the ordinance committee is tasked with the following duties and powers. The first is to advise the town officers of ordinances prescribed by the comprehensive plan, which needs updating. That would enhance proper growth and development patterns, enhance livability, protect important resources and the natural, the rural character of Buckfield. Two, to research and write ordinances for review by the citizens of Buckfield, the Buckfield Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. Three, to seek out resources, grants, professional advice that may be available to Buckfield to assist with ordinance development. And four, to be available to explain said ordinances that have been developed in advance to the town meeting. Um, my other committees are the Old Church on the Hill Committee. We are working on um, getting together and. Meeting, we have yet to yet, partially my fault. I. Had not realized that committees were also bound to the seven day notice, so the last meeting I tried to organize did not adhere to those. Rules, but we're trying again. We have um, three members on that committee and I know that. Two of them are quite busy with uh, commitments to other committees that they are also on, but if there is anyone out there who is interested. In the historical preservation of an iconic Buckfield uh, building. It's right on our town crest. If anyone is interested in. Learning a little bit about uh, restoration, we have a excellent gentleman, Richard Irons on the board who has. On the committee who has experience. Um, with restoration, so you can learn some fun facts from him. If anyone's interested in anything like that, then please. Join us on the Old Church on the Hill Committee. Um, and then my third committee would be the Recreation Committee, which Cam was kind enough to debrief me on. Um, let me know if I miss anything, but. Registration is now open for baseball, T-ball and softball and will close on the twenty third of March, so get your registration in. Um, coaching applications are available on the recreation website. Um, which can be found if you go to the town of Buckfield website. And you go to the recreation committee, it will direct you to our new sports engine website, which we are now using to. Coordinate schedules and events and registration. Um, and I've heard that. It is going really well utilizing this new engine, so. Um, anyone looking for information on the Buckfield Recreation, just go right ahead to our website and hit the Recreation Committee. It'll direct you right to. The new webpage, which looks very nice and easy to navigate.
A lot easier than our regular websites.
Yes.
I have two comments, maybe some questions. The uh, ordinance committee. I'm not a person, I've been a coding working director. Multiplying ordinances doesn't always solve the problem. And I think there may be some very important things we need, but I think for forward right ordinances. Uh, I think the leader is political leader of the town. To decide what problem they're trying to solve. Or goalie are trying to achieve. Those ordinance. Yeah, like part of encouraging. Uh, about that topic and. Economic development, so it's picked around, what's happening. And also the old church on the hill, but I don't believe. The town can afford to maintain unless they find viable use. It's made a whole lot of. Having parking area. Do that. I've had a lot of work commercial and. Residential real estate. I just don't think it's viable. I think it's viable, but. Wedding venue, first of all, but. Not, we're not making enough money. Sleepy group. The only solution I can think of. Leasing without big long term lease, somebody will operate it. I hope they make money on this and they can maintain it.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
All right, I have the Buckfield Village Corporation and I don't think they've met yet, but. Glenn wants to come to the next. Select board meeting, if that's okay. Um, library committee. They are having another book sale. And there's touring and stuff like that too. We do a really good job up there. Their rules, they always have um. Like the library director update and. All that stuff. Oh, they're having a tea party in March six. It's thirty dollars a person. It's one of those things where you.
Leave the, sorry. The feasibility study was paid for by the friends of the library and their work and or the architect. Dan Marino. Is working or meeting with the library committee. They've drafted questions. They've sent me those questions. I took time to answer those questions and send them back to him for their next meeting, which I believe is the twenty ninth. Right, yep. So. Well, I think it it just happened like two days ago, so. So I'm, I'm trying to provide as much information for them so that they can look at their feasibility study. You know, within reason of what. I feel is 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 plausible, but I also said, what I did say was I was gonna send those questions off to you all with my responses in case. Maybe some of your opinions differ from mine, so I will email my responses to all you. And then if you could get those back to me before the twenty ninth, so I can. Send them any updates. Would be helpful.
And then my other one is just verification and it's just me and Connor. And. Just there, get dirty smell right there. Not much to report, but if people want to join us this spring, that would be cool. And do, doing like painting and gardening and stuff in here too.
Thank you.
And I have the Appeal Board, which currently is just the board of one, so I don't know how that.
Well, if anybody appeals anything, we don't have enough people to have a quorum, so. I encourage people to. I don't think the appeals board's met once since I've I've been here, but that doesn't necessarily take away from their, the need of it, so. If anybody's interested in joining the appeals board. Come see me at the town office.
I should know, and I don't. So does anyone know if someone can serve on both the planning board and the appeals board?
Yeah, so.
Given that we may have.
Yeah, because one of our. Planning board members is also.
Could that be one or?
Did Earl resign? It says that. So in a way, yes.
So maybe Azalia could make the same fantastic pitch.
If anyone is interested in joining the Buckfield Appeals Board. The appeals board is charged with lis- uh, listening to residents that feel they may be entitled to a waiver or variance in regard to the town's shoreline zoning. Uh, and or the building permit, lock dimension and setback ordinances. Um, and meetings are scheduled on an as needed basis, so not a, not a super huge commitment, just saying. Come on over.
I also have the Social Services Committee, which is a. Early, uh, I have reached out to. One of the members that I heard back. I think they only needs. I'm in that deck this year. So she's gonna ask that.
Another low commitment committee searching for members.
There could be up to seven numbers.
Up to seven, join the party.
And with that, with that said, because you don't know this. I do have a bunch of social service requests. I usually compile them all and then. When they have a chance to meet, they go over them and discuss them, so I'll probably. If you do make contact with any of them, I'll probably be reaching out here soon. Asking them to have a meeting, because I I have a folder downstairs of all the requests that they're gonna need to review.
And then there's the Economic Development Committee. Uh, has four members in it, so we're good there. They still have a position for one one member. Um, I haven't heard back from. People have tried to contact there either. They haven't met yet this year. Uh, I think they were supposed to meet once a month, or at least that's what it says in there.
They met very regularly um, before Janet passed away and I don't think they've met since.
Urgency management planning.
Okay, um. We're gonna start working on updating the emergency management plan and just this afternoon. With the help of Duan from Historical Society, that document is now able to be redlined and edited. I just have to figure out how to work tomorrow.
You got this, Sophia.
So my question is, does that format work for everybody on the board? Because if it does, you'll get your first fifteen pages that will be ready to be reviewed with the next move.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So that's that. There's a template that we can use with updating the emergency management plan that. Kami at Oxford County sent. I can forward that template to you. I look at. I, I really believe that the. Whoever created the last one did follow that template. I've already been through the plan twice and I've been through the template and it looks very like. Format, almost identical. If you want the template, let me know, I can get it. Otherwise, if I see something really skewed, that I I can bring that. Does that make sense? Okay, then. Mister Alan Rent from the, from FEMA Department of Homeland Security External Affairs. Uh, may do an in-person. Office visit here in Buckfield next Wednesday the twenty first, but he didn't. Set a time. Um, do you want me, once I get another email from him to do?
That is tomorrow.
I must have looked at the wrong date.
No worries.
Thank you. I think the twenty eighth, because he definitely said that week, I think. I think there was a lot of emails. I'll double check that. If you want me to notify you guys.
Yeah, yeah, if you can send it on email, it'd be good.
Yes, and on. Um, Patrick. Can't think of his last name. He's also FEMA representative for Indian and did a fly by the office and met Karen today and. Me again, I had met him at the briefing and uh, he may be where everyone. And over the weekend, lots of information went out, especially around the door to door FEMA stuff. I had sent you guys all that information, so if you saw something weird on Facebook, you could correct it. Um, so that's ongoing and we're more today. So there was an issue. There was a question about the town not being notified when the school potentially went on lockdown last week. So conversation was had. Uh, with Oxford County Emergency Management, who is also in the process of working with the school to update their emergency plan. And as a result of that, recontacted us. Karen, myself and Tucker at Fire now are on uh. Emergency alert system for the school. If any of you want to be on it. We can add you on the register. Do you want to be added to the list? So yes, yes. You're, okay, so that's yeah.
Fast pass.
Say again.
I might not be on it next year. I might be on it this first couple of months. Did they take you off when you think I'm doing?
I don't know, but I'll make sure that you're on as a select one. Okay. So we began off with the work into the FEMA portal for the grant and the request for public assistance was made. So in March, I believe we'll start filling out forms and I've already, you know, here I've already communicated with Cameron. Will need more specific information, so on and so forth. Uh, I think there was a budget submitted. It's in your budget. You'll see it later on tonight. Um. I think Karen did a good job with it. It's a, it's an incentive for somebody that may be already involved with the town. Or somebody that would like to be involved with the town. Um, it is not me creating a job for me. No, thank you. That's not it. It's it's an incentive. And. Um, heads up, I'll be sending you relevant information from now on instead of waiting until the last minute. Um, if I get something during the week and email or something that I think you might be interested, I'm just gonna send it that way when you. Um, and I had talked to Peter and Sandra. Um. So that when the monthly report comes, I don't have to go into, like it goes like, oh, by the way, here's the follow up. I don't forget my full fifteen minutes. I can keep going. What is it? Everybody good?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
All right, so really truly look for the emails though, because as soon as I can. Get those notes. Soon as I understand how to use that toolbar, I can send it. And then. And then. Um you can send stuff right back to me and then we can just like break through the means.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And Stacy, by the way, I did check, she's on board with that format as well. I, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, new business consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I?
Peter I.
Sandra I.
Great motion passes. Uh the amount is two hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety dollars and seventy cents. And we're gonna skip back to Biv real quick for the EMA.
There's a little flyer on the table.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hand it out. It's a little late, but it's still way early. Um but that came directly from Oxford County Emergency Management, and it really is. An emergency management preparation, prevention staff. But thought that you guys might wanna see it and think about it and um. Yeah.
Right, solar eclipse aside of being beautiful is can exorcise.
Yes. Yes, and track and tour, you know, you love an accident, it's my intention, you know. You want to track it.
I think the next one that happens in this area doesn't happen for another like forty years, so everyone is gonna. Move to where they can see it and. I don't think we're in, we're a little farther away from the path of totality, but you'll still be able to see a a partial solar eclipse from here, so it's something to think about.
Thank you. All right. Uh the library director recognition.
So I put this in here because I I received an email. And I just, I I wanted to give Kathy credit where friends do, so I'll just read this. Um, good afternoon, Mister Hinckley. My name's Jared Ledbetter and I'm a library specialist at the Maine State Library. I'm writing to you in the in that capacity to raise awareness about your town's library director Kathy Hladick. Librarians are called upon to assist patrons with finding information and getting connected with resources. And one such patron she helped recently was a was a special case. This gentleman of ninety years is a is a prolific reader and was finding it difficult to receive books for audio recording. The recordings as his eyesight had degenerated. Kathy's resolve to assist this gentleman was noteworthy. Her patience, diligence, and persistence with this person who was quite frustrated with. Both his own vision difficulties moved him past those difficulties and to the help that he needed. It's important for us as state workers to have people like Kathy who can help us bring our resources to where they're needed. In this case, the Zadok Longfry Library and the gentleman whose life has been made better with her help. I hope this letter of recognition might underscore the value of your local library to your community. So. I just felt. She should be recognized probably for, I know she works really hard, so.
And if you haven't had the pleasure of meeting Kathy, she. Is right down at the library, which if you haven't had the pleasure of visiting, you should definitely take the time out of. Your day to go stop in there and see what she's doing. It's really fantastic.
Yeah, they have good hours too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Great hours, great events, always book sale going on. She does great work.
She's doing an awesome job.
Right, approval of the minutes for February sixth, twenty twenty four select board meeting.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty four select board meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
Thank you. ARPA funds and the municipal center group. Yeah, yes.
Do you wanna hit on this? I know we discussed it in the budget. Yeah. Uh, so. To spin off of that, um. I did, and I had mentioned this in the last meeting, I did apply for a grant to try and get some money to at least repair the roof, um which. Basically, what I applied for was to reseal the roof, um. I won't know till whenever, so. I can't remember when the, when they're making their decision, but um. I did make an effort to apply for it. I remembered at eight P M. That I had till midnight to submit it and I came back down here and made sure it was submitted, so. Um, but. I I think it's important. No matter what, we gotta look at it. We don't have to look at, we have to do something about this roof this this coming year, because. It it's leaking and. I mean, you can see that sheet rock right there. You can see it's had some leaking, so I mean, the roof hasn't been sealed first, I think, oh. It's been a long time.
Yeah.
Uh. If we seal it. We might get another five to ten years. Or if we are able to pay for. It and do it properly, if we put a rubber membrane up there, which would be double the money to do, but you get a lot more. Life out of it than than what we currently have up there. Um. And with that, I mean, as we look at things that we need to do inside this building. I think before we start looking at what we need to do inside this building and we need to make sure that the water stays out of it.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we start repairing inside and then water gets in, we're just wasting money, so.
So is there?
I forgot to grab the number.
Um, yeah, I don't know how much of the ARPA bodies has to be left, but.
There's a, there's a little over twenty thousand dollars left in there, and of that twenty thousand, I think nineteen thousand's original ARPA funds and the rest is interest earned. Over the time, which there's no stipulation on what we can spend the interest on, but it stays in that account. So.
Is there any other funds that? Build and maintenance and like that, because I mean, we're gonna have to look at this. For next winter.
So. In the in the proposed budget, um I put twenty thousand dollars into the maintenance of this building. Um. So there there'd be additional funds there if it ended up costing more than what we have available to us, I mean, between ARPA. Um. There's really not. Because, I mean, we have the emergency contingency, but we don't want to expend that all on a roof, you know, going into a new fiscal year.
Right.
Um.
So maybe we should get a estimate first and see what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's tough getting estimates this time of year. I mean, I've called a lot of roofers, a lot of them aren't even, they're not working right now, and this is a. Special case because the only access to the roof. Is up a fourteen foot ladder through a hole that I can barely fit through, um the alternate, you know, when, in order for me to get on the roof. We used the ladder truck. The Quinn. Because there's no outside access to the roof, so. My intent is to get it. Get an estimate put together this spring, but as we go into the budget, um. We just need to anticipate where we want to pay for that, whether that be increase that maintenance line and 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 tax it or utilize the funds that are sitting there, because we have a limited amount of time to use them anyways. But.
Yes, I'm.
We're needing. Assign those funds. To be used. On the roof. Before knowing exactly. Which way we're going to go with the roof, but that way we'll know that we can at least have those funds. The plan being to do as much as we can, whether, if we can seal it, we should seal, I mean, the membrane, we should do that, and if not.
At least seal it.
At least seal it. But the idea would be is for us. At the select board to determine. That that's where those funds would go.
Right. And I would ask the select board, choose a number. And say. And entertain a motion to expend up to whatever that amount is. To repair the roof. If the quotes come in or the estimates come in and they're more than that. I'll have to come back to you and figure out. Um, well, I have to come to you anyways, because you'll have to approve the quote, because it's. I guarantee you it's gonna be over five thousand dollars.
If the select board were to vote. Um to designate all remaining funds and it didn't cost that, then what happens?
The way ARPA reporting works is we would report the amount that was spent and those funds would still be in that account to be utilizing. You'd have to make a motion to utilize those funds for something else at some other point, but correct. That's why. I would, in the motion, I would say up to whatever that amount is, and then if it doesn't cost that much, that money remains in ARPA. For whatever purpose is deemed necessary at a later date. That makes sense?
Yeah, would you recommend a membrane roof that's been a better investment? You know, that pays the money, but it's. Every more than twice your lifetime.
You would get two to three times a lifetime out of, out of it. I I I've probably been the only person that's been on that roof in a few years, so. The the current state of it is the. The the. The sealant or the the coating or whatever that's up there right now, it's it's brittle, it's cracked, it sits in the sun. Um it's definitely in need of it, the seams. The way this building's structured, it's got. It's got like a hat on each side that sits up. I don't know, a foot and a half and and the uh. The rubber or the, I don't even know if it's rubber or if it's tarp paper they have up there, but where it meets that. They curved it up at an angle, so it's not actually fixed, it's kind of just floating there. Which, as time goes on, wind blows, you know, it gets weak and that's where they start to leak, so that that membrane they'd be able to put up there. Seal all the, seal all the cracks between the membrane pieces and I, I mean, that roof would probably outlive this building.
Well, it's gonna be a lot more than twenty thousand, that's what's available. Part of that about what's available.
Is there's about twenty thousand there. But if they could.
Recommend that you go with. Good instrument, you have a done proposal. The proposal. And we put the money in the budget to make up the balance. And it depends deal to make a deal.
Mm-hmm.
If you're good investment.
Yeah.
That would be my preference, yeah, to have it, you know. I'll do it halfway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the grant I put in for. And I'll just be transparent here, the grant I put in for was to seal the roof, because the grant was capped at ten thousand dollars. And the estimate I came up with was like ninety-two fifty or ninety-two hundred dollars. So. If we were awarded the grant, that's. Essentially what we would get the funds for, however. Um I do believe after reading it, if if. We were awarded the grant and we had the ARPA funds. There's nothing saying we couldn't go above and beyond, because the way I presented the grant was to repair or replace.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, that's another potential ninety-two hundred dollars, and then I do, in the proposed budget, I do have twenty thousand dollars in that for maintenance. Um I hope a membrane roof wouldn't cost us fifty thousand dollars, but what do I know?
Cause they have to do a lot of stripping.
A lot of those those membrane roofs can go right over what's already there.
Yeah, but if you got bungee wood under it, not a good idea. They're good.
I learned that this roof slants. I always thought it was a flat roof.
Well.
It's that's. Slightly.
The shuttles on now, right?
Yeah, well, it used to have roof drains. But they don't exist anymore. That way. Right, that's the back of the building? Yeah, it, but it just runs really slow. Yeah. I'm telling you, the slants on that roof is like. What's that? At some point. In this building's history, they redid the roof, they got rid of all the roof drains and they no longer exist.
The drain ran through the interior.
Yes, yeah. I can see the drains in the basement that were cut off, but there's definitely no roof drains on that roof.
Uh how late can we? Get additional funds in the next year budget?
The select board needs to. Make their final recommendation and have the warrant signed. Really, I I told them April at the latest, April twelve, or I believe I came up April twelve. But the sooner the better, because. Um.
I didn't get that.
Sooner the better, because. I have to, we have to enter everything into elections and have them um print the ballots for the machines. And if we miss that cutoff.
You can get it. There's a bit of soon.
I don't anticipate being able. I I don't anticipate. The conversations I've had with contractors and and I'd welcome anybody who. Wants to come and. Put together a proposal, but the responses I got were, were not even working until the spring. So. They gotta inspect the roof to be able to do it, they gotta get on the roof. I haven't been successful at being able to get those quotes. Because a lot of. Roofing companies, they they don't, they don't work in the winter.
They're flawed.
Exactly. I mean, I have, I have drone video of the roofs, because I put my drone up there and took a video of it so that I could show it to a few contractors, but.
Wait till next year or.
I mean, from what I can see from this historic, it looks like it's been sealed a couple of times, and it seems to last about. Yeah. But those seams are what are causing the issue right now. The seam on that corner is, it leaked into the historical society and the sheet rocks coming down.
It sounds like you can't get the ideal refund this year. Weather condition.
Happy time of year.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, uh insurance, will it matter what type of roof we place the roof, we have? The reason why I'm asking this question is because I found out. That I'm pretty sure. That field would not cover it. There was damage, there was storm damage to the membrane roof. Um, I can double check that.
There's no difference with our insurance company, whether we have a membrane roof or a sealed roof.
I'm just wondering.
No.
And um. And then the other thing would be. Going over twine, but possibly fifteen. Um. As. In looking in light of the six percent. Increase to the budget already, the possibility of being open to exploring financing part of it for maybe two or three years. Uh instead of having one big huge hit to nobody, if that's gonna, but. I know where the budget is setting, so I just wanted.
So we can't get, we're not gonna get a membrane roof this year, for sure.
Well, it it it.
Be damaged in the water, where.
At at the end of the day. We can't not do anything.
Yeah.
At a minimum, the roof needs to be sealed.
Well, you can do spot repairs.
Uh no, that whole roof needs to be, you can't find them, it it needs to be. Like I said, we could reseal that roof for under ten thousand dollars.
If we reseal it and make a plan for future membrane roof. As soon as we can.
And I.
Yes, I'm.
We designate the farms. And see what we can do.
Yeah.
So our hope is that we can do a membrane, if we can. Given everything we can put together, then at least we will see.
I mean, no matter what, I have to bring it back to you anyways, because the cost of it's gonna be higher than I can authorize.
So.
Now I'm just. Place holding it for.
So. I'd like to make a motion that we designate up to the total of the remaining ARPA funds for repair of the roof.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
And I'll try and get your calls.
Yeah. All right. Uh, animal patrol. Can we table this one, Joe? Next meeting?
You all in agreement?
We're all agree.
Yes, sir.
Lake Auburn Watership Protection.
Glenn, I I think he C C D you all in the email.
Did I make a motion before we discuss? Alright, I will make a motion that we appoint Glenn Holmes to the Lake Auburn Watership Protection Commission on behalf of Buckfield. Uh, for the next term of one year, one year or two years? He said he served two years, but is that two one-year terms or? So I, let me start that again, I will make a motion that we appoint Glenn Holmes as our uh. Designated the Lake Auburn Watership Protection Commission for a one-year appointment. Thank you.
I think you covered it.
Are you sure it's one year? Should we just say we're the next?
Let me revise. I will make a motion that we reappoint Glenn Holmes to the Lake Auburn Watership Protection Commission. For the next term, for the next term.
There we go, alright, any discussion on that? Yes, thank you, all of your favor, bye bye.
I gave him the two dates for your board meeting in May. Cause he had asked if he could set a time to meet with each board in May, so. And it's a one-year term. Alright, so, and the the budget I posted online back in um. At the beginning of February, it's it's been on the budget committee page. I met with the budget committee on the second and we went over it and I think Peter talked about um. How that ended, uh, so I put in their recommendations. Which was the one change to the on-call wage. And then as I started looking at more information. I didn't change anything on the budget that I gave you. However, it seems like I had a miscalculation on the the wage line for rescue. Put two hundred and sixty seven thousand. At the uh existing four dollar on-call wage. That number should have been two eighty-five, nine forty-eight, so two eighty-six. So I'm only giving you that information now because I identified the miscalculation, I think I left out. The the proposal for that that line was to put on one provider. Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, we currently have only on-call on that on those days. Which are the three days that Bob can probably attest to this, those are the three hardest days to fill. One of the driving factors there, and I think that was part of the reason that the budget committee had made the recommendation on the on-call wages. I have a lot of staff that doesn't live in Buckfield, Hartford or Sumner. Um, or in proximity to it, I've got a lot that live over the mountain in Paris and Oxford. Basically, a lot of my staff lives out of town. In order to pay an on-call wage, I think the on-call rules are you have to be able to respond within seven minutes. It's it's either, yeah, you have to be there, you have to be there with insects, so obviously we know that people who live in Paris and Oxford and, you know. They're not gonna be able to the station, so that requirement then means that they're gonna have to be in town. At that point, we get into the legalities of now I have to pay a minimum wage, at at least to be there. Um, so what we were looking for, drivers are relatively, I don't say easy to find, but we we tend, those are the the. Less difficult people to find coverage for. Because worst case scenario, in an emergency situation, we can tone up fire and a fire guy can drive the ambulance. So. The proposal was to have a provider, so an E M T, a basic E M T or higher on. Those nights, I don't want to have a driver staffed at full wage, I just wanna have that provider available because without the provider, we can't provide service. So that's that's what went into the, there was the most significant increase to the wage line. As well as it was a three percent raise, is what I hear, or roughly three percent, it originally went three percent across the board and then. The chief had asked to apply that three percent, the amount of that three percent to. The license levels as opposed and not the drivers, because the incentive for. Really a driver comes in and becomes a driver, we want them to level up, we want them to get their license and then be a provider. So the really only, they got a raise, minimum wage went up. So they've already, you know, they've already gotten a raise and she asked that I leave that at minimum wage to incentivize them to either level up or. So. My math was off on that one line, um, you can discuss it when you get into the process of going through the budget. I left the two sixty-seven in there and all I did with the recommendation was take the number of hours that would be on call. And add the extra two dollars an hour for those shifts, so that's where you, I think you noticed like a four thousand dollar difference between what I had originally proposed. And what the budget committee came up with. Outside of that. Costs and things have gone up, um, I included uh. A copy of the letter that I essentially wrote to the budget committee with an extra paragraph at the end explaining what we did. And it kind of gives you a basic breakdown of where the increases are and where they aren't, Peter hit on the paving. The proposed budget's four seventy, last year it was three seventy. You're the man. Thank you, Peter. So this will be good as you look at these um and start making your recommendations if you haven't already started looking at it, I know some of you have. The biggest thing as I presented to uh the budget committee. I didn't, I hit on the fact that I'm I was trying to get. Our wages closer in line with the fiftieth percentile, but when you look at all the wages I put in, almost every one of the positions is still under the fiftieth percentile. I don't think that the town. For its size pays certain positions what they should. I mean, it's just, it it is what it is, um, and I think my focus. And our focus should be to retain the train staff that we have. Um, and unfortunately, the economy drives that, people have kids to pay for, they have roofs to keep over their heads and we want them to be able to. Work and not, you know. Have to go elsewhere to find that and uh we're really lacking in some areas. So you'll see the increases that I proposed in wages, um. Most of the other stuff, I mean, costs, it it just comes down, it comes down to costs and there's nothing I can control. Um, I talked to the insurance agency with the number of claims that we've had, not just us, but the number of claims they've had all over with the increased storms and. We agreed that proposing a twenty percent increase wasn't that far-fetched, I think last year I proposed a ten percent, it was a little under that. But with everything that's happened over the last year and a half, increased claims. He's anticipating a a double-digit increase in insurance anyways and um. He felt that if I proposed that twenty percent. We'd be okay, but I didn't want to propose ten and have it go up fifteen and. Now we have a five percent shortage of where we should be, so. Insurance was an increase. What else did you hit on, Peter? I didn't get a chance to read it. So, yeah, he's got. Expenses or administration costs, so administration costs are up, um primarily driven by the. The proposed wage increases. With that, I also want to hit on, we're talking about expenses, revenues are projected to be up. I can't remember the exact figure, I don't have it right in front of me, but. Um, revenues are up primarily driven by interest rates, municipal revenue sharing. So some of the increases are offset by. The increased revenues, um, rescue revenue is down from last year because. When last year's revenue was projected, it was projected based off of doing transfers. We don't not do transfers, but with the ambulance being out for a month and a half and us being more selective about the transfers that we take. Obviously, that impacts the revenue, um, so we're not gonna project a high figure when we know we're not gonna hit it. We're not gonna be able to to meet the the. The target, um, so that's down, I think we said it at two twenty-five, last year it was two fifty-seven. And I think that's fair, it also includes the contract revenue in years past. People haven't included the contract revenue in there, so this is what I feel is a accurate representation of what rescue will bring in next year. Contracts for fire and rescue, this is the last year of the contract, so this year we'll have to start negotiating those contracts. And um, I, we really are gonna be focused on in increasing the per capita rate, not for fire, fire is where it needs to be. Um, and I think it's equitable with what we pay for fire service, uh, but the the rescue per capita rates just, it's not where it needs to be. So we staggered the last contract. We'll probably look to stagger the the next and see where that goes. So that'll help with the revenue a little bit, I mean, it's only a slight slight amount, but every little bit counts. What else? Um, but he said that, so the public works budget does have a large increase, some of its wages, um, Peter noted on here. One of our trucks. It's a good truck, but the body is, it needs to be replaced, it's it's gotten to the point now where it's. It's a safety issue, um, it's. It's affecting its ability to drop sand. And it's caused one of my drivers to go down a hill backwards, so it it's something we can't avoid. And I don't think the town needs to go out and buy a brand new truck to replace it, but um, we've tried to patch it, it, we've looked at patching it. If anybody's ever done any welding, you start cutting and welding and then you just get further and further and it's just, it's not. It can't be done safely, so. If I I included that in the maintenance and repair line for um public works because it needs to be done, we received three quotes, the lowest one was forty-five thousand. The other two were over over fifty thousand. So I went with the lowest quote and put it in there, uh, if that doesn't pass. Then. I'm gonna have, I I will most likely deadline that truck next year until there's a plan to fix it, which. Then requires us to use the backup truck, which is next in line to be replaced next year because it's. It's a single axle, it's the oldest, I think it's a number five. It really could have been replaced this year, but I didn't want to put it in the budget. So kind of between a rock and a hard place there, we either replace the body or we use the old truck and potentially have an issue where we're done two trucks and. We don't have a plan for it, so. That's that increase in that line. Um, debt service is going down forty-five thousand due to the fact that we already taxed out everything we needed to for the the revale. Um, next year there'll be another thirty thousand dollars, not this coming year, but the following year, there'll be another thirty-ish, thirty-five thousand coming off. For two of the trucks that we bought. Five years ago. Um, so those will be paid off as well, so we had increased revenues. Our debt service went down forty-five thousand, so that helps absorb some of those increases, but I I think all in it, all in, it started out as a ten point three percent increase. And then once you factor in increased revenues and the. Um, yeah, increased revenues, I it came up to just over six. I know we talked about a three, but.
Yeah, if if we take the three hundred thousand out of the fund balance. Do we know that we are leaving sixty days?
Yes. I don't, I I, and as I've explained to you before, I I don't know the exact to the dollar and penny. Amount of our fund balance, but I can do a rough calculation and know the ballpark of where we're at and if we're where we need to be. And and we're good.
Yes, man.
And which of the public works members was ranked? And at the end. Um, when he's talking about the effect on the town, um, mill rates. Is that the um entire budget including school or is this just the the middle rate for the town?
So, so for budgeting purposes, I. Project, or or when I did this budget, to make sure that I could come up with figures to give an estimate, and that's all it ever is, an estimate on the mill rate. I'm never gonna put my life on something that I estimate for that, because I have no control, but the assessors can set, they're the ones that set the mill rate. So utilizing today's value of the town. And then proposing, what did I, I think I put in a. Five percent increase for both the school and county. That's roughly what I could see. With a five percent, however, after listening to the the school update, I'm nervous about what the school's gonna pro- project. I would highly encourage people, when the budget schedule comes out, to go and talk at these meetings, because. You know. The school's important and I get that, but just like the town, you know. We've got to figure out what we can afford and we. And and we can't keep cutting the municipal budget to subsidize the school. Because our services get worse, our our infrastructure gets worse and next year they're just gonna ask for the same again. Now, what do we need versus what do we want and I I. I hope people from town, I I know it gets frustrating because sometimes you get to go to Mexico, but when they do that budget process, I do believe they come to Buckfield too. And every time it seems like nobody goes. I I'm really nervous about that and I, with county, I I'm. I gotta follow up with the commissioners, I I'm not sure, I don't.
They sent dates for those budget meetings yet?
They may be on their calendar, I haven't, nobody's told me the dates. You can beat me to it. Last time I did this, I pulled up last year's schedule, so. Let's go to school board first, where the heck is it? You should see, you would have beat me. It's like a site within the site that I've never seen you be able to find. That's not the meetings, oh, board and budget meeting schedule. Annual budget meeting, board workshop, alright, so it looks like it starts. And this is the problem, when we're proposing these budgets, we won't even know, um, April first. Which is a Monday, looks like their first annual budget meeting. And then they've got. May, they've got two dates, the twentieth and the twenty-ninth, it doesn't tell you where it's at. So we get dates, we just don't know. So these I think are the public hearings. So one of these will be in Buckfield. Annual budget meeting.
There there are two meetings set for May of twenty twenty-four, one is on a Monday, the twentieth, and one is on a Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. So those are likely hearings and they'll have one of those at Buckfield, but it doesn't say which one. But their budget. Meetings start on April first, that's the first budget meeting, then they'll have the two at the end of May, I just mentioned. And then they have one final one on June eleventh.
So anticipate.
Usually at six thirty, but the April first one is six.
Yeah, it says six P M start time. So.
That's that's the earliest thing they have in their calendar marked as an annual budget meeting for workshop or information meeting in town though.
Yeah, so I'm guessing the first is their annual budget meeting, the twentieth and twenty-ninth are their board workshops. And then the eleventh is when we vote. And then the eleventh is when we vote, so. It may behoove people to actually go to.
April first at six P M. May twentieth at six thirty, May twenty-ninth at six thirty. And then June eleventh.
We don't know where you.
No, it doesn't. My guess is it's probably in Mountain Valley. The next Nazinski, the next meeting in the Nazinski Valley, which is at Buckfield Junior Senior High School for a school board meeting is. March twenty-fifth. The rest of them are in. Valley. So they do have a meeting on the twenty-sixth in Mountain Valley, the eleventh in Mountain Valley, and then the twenty-fifth in Buckfield. So. Uh, yeah, so if anybody wanted to actually go to the school board meeting and. Yes, it's right on the uh.
Yes, if you if you go to the RSU ten site. Um, and then go to departments. And then school board. Or just Google RSU town school.
Like I did.
Yes, Peter.
There's a question for Cameron. I wonder if we. Make sense to uh. Increase the uh. Rise of the tool budget.
I mean, I can, I can play with everything. Tomorrow and put in, we'll say it, ten percent increase for the school. And then I can plug that information into the M V R that I utilize to come up with the estimate and 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 give a. Another scary estimated figure. Um. And I can send that off. To you.
We're in for disappointment with the voters to see a low number and. Better to come down and. Or be right on par, very close.
I. Oops, sorry. As I say, I I anticipate if if the school comes back with. He he, the tricky thing is this, right? Because everything's based off of. Valuation and the formula, so like the school itself might only have, say, a six percent increase, but Buckfield. Because of our valuation might see a nine percent increase while Mexico sees a three percent increase, so. It's it's hard to figure that out too, you know what I mean? Because we could all go to school board and say, hey, no nothing more than five percent, but then, well, five, okay, five percent, and then they turn around and. We end up with a seven. It's, I I I hate trying to. Estimate it. I think. Jerry was very, Jerry and I talked last year when he was on the board when they were working on it, and I was hammering on him and hammering on him about a five percent. And he did, I mean, he went back to those meetings and he talked about it and, you know, they they. Worked it down, but I think we ended up seeing. A six to seven percent increase after all, but it was a five percent for the district or it was less than five percent for the district. So. I just. I don't.
I think that. The rebound. The rebound will. Help. And. So the sooner that process be completed. And so like along these lines, I know that there have been questions and concerns about the letter that went out. Um. Cameron, maybe you could. Speak to.
The letter.
So. As I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong. That if when the folks doing the rebound, when they went to a property, if the property was posted, then they did not go on to that property. Or there may be for other reasons, properties. That. They didn't access, so they sent a letter out to folks and they included in that letter something about going into. Your home. I will speak for myself. I would be very uncomfortable letting somebody into my home. I get why that would. Cause people concerned. But as I understand it, and. I think it's important that we all share this with as many people as possible. That you do not have to let. Folks into your home. What you do need to do. Is. To participate in the process. To answer the questions respectfully. Um, and as long as you do that. Then. If you disagree. With the. Amount. That is presented. Then you can. Go back, what's the term?
Appeal.
Appeal, then you can appeal. You don't have to let people into your house in order to be able to appeal. You just simply need to. Be willing to participate in the process. And the sooner we can get this done. The sooner it will help everyone. That that's my read on it, and I I know that people got. Really worked up because they believed they had to let people in their homes, and I get that. I would not want someone in my home. But. We participated in the process, you answered the questions, wasn't a big deal. If we may not like to do this, but this is the process that. We have in this town. And we need to. Participate in the process.
You you hit on that good. So essentially, the letter came out and there was some verbiage in there that. It did upset people because it did sound like if you didn't let people in the house. You lost your right to appeal. And.
Is that, do you have the letter with you, Judy? Or is that what this is?
I wonder if this was a legitimate letter.
So. Can I see the other? So there's a sentence in here.
Excuse me for interrupting. This letter did not come from, not at Buckfield.
No, this came from the vendor that's conducting the revale for Buckfield.
It's unfortunate that they worded it.
They also used the seal on the. On the top left-handed corner.
Alright, so let's just get to the point. I approve this letter. And reading it after the fact, I would have suggested some changes. I've spoken to K R T, and I'm gonna get to that, but. This came out with our seal on it because we contracted with them. These letters came to me. I read. I skimmed through them. Um, and I authorized them to send them out. The sentence that everybody is. Do you have the no trespassing one? Please be sure the inspection process. Do you have land that's posted, Judy? Do you have land that's posted?
Yeah.
Maybe I'm. I can't find the exact. Sentence that I'm looking for, but essentially it, oh, right here, failure to allow an interior inspection may cause you to lose your right to appeal. So let's clarify that. Like Sandra just hit on, you don't. Have to let them in your house. You can go to the main um. Main. Revenue Service website and find an information sheet on revaluations, and it specifically says, no, you don't have to require them to go in your house. However, part of the process is gathering as much information about your home in order to give you a proper assessment. So if you contact K R T and explain that you don't want anybody in the house. They'll ask you questions such as, how many bedrooms do you have? How many bathrooms do you have? Do you have a basement? Is it finished? Is it partially finished? How do you heat your house? That all goes in to determine your assessment. If you refuse to be a part of that process. You can still. Once the valuations come out, appeal it, but at that point, you will have to allow. Us to verify it somehow. If you're claiming that you. You know, if if they put you in as having a four-bedroom, two-bath house, and really you only got a three-bedroom, one-bath house, and you know. You're, it it affects your valuation. I don't know the figures because I haven't seen the data tables, but. Um, and you're claiming that that's not true, we're going to have to verify it some way. And if that means. Just allowing somebody to see that, yeah, you're, you have three bedrooms and one bath, um, that may be something that needs to. Take place. Other words, they. They're going off the best information that they have. So just tell them what you have. And once the assessment comes out, if you still disagree with it, you can, you can appeal that as well, but you you essentially get three opportunities to, you know. You you won't lose your right to appeal it, but if you just flat out refuse to be a part of the process. We, the state of Maine says that the assessor has to assess ev- all real property, and if you don't want to help us with that information, then. We have to assess it how. To the best of our ability. Um. And. On one hand, it is good. It's somebody that has no ties to Buckfield. That, you know, is determining a fair and equitable value for all properties in our town. And there will be that appeals process, and I'm sure there'll be abatement requests, and that's all part of the process, but. Nobody's out to get anybody, and they're not just looking at. Ooh, do you have granite countertops? They're looking at depreciation. If a house is, I I don't want to say rundown, but you know, it's it's dated and it hasn't been remodeled. That. Affects your assessment in a positive way for you because, you know, the valuation isn't there that you would see in a new house that was just built, so.
But I mean, it's like. And they're gonna assume that it's in a decent condition on the inside. If if it isn't, then that's, it's just gonna hurt you if you don't participate in this process.
Right. But it doesn't need to be invasive. You don't have, I mean, you don't have, nobody's gonna force their way into your house. Nobody's gonna make you feel bad because you don't. And I worked with these guys all through the summer and winter. They're understanding. If if you say I I don't wanna, I don't wanna come in, then. Can I just ask you a few questions? And they'll be on their way. It takes like five minutes. Here's a little secret. Nobody walked into my house. So.
Travel with this letter created in what it's called, because it's not correct.
Yeah, I I would say it's misleading, but. It's caused me a lot of, I, let's just say. I'm fifteen hundred dollars over my postage budgets. That, this is my correction, and and like I said, because, you know, I was the one that approved the letter, so it's on me for not. Being a little bit more thorough on reading it, because I would have had that paragraph changed. And I've done everything I possibly can to get that information out. I've. Shared the information with as many people online as I can, and I've brought flyers, Tiltons, I've put stuff down and, I mean.
And what should be noted is this is not. An uncommon process. This, this happens everywhere in Maine, every town knows it. And you should do it every ten years. We haven't done it in.
It depends on the growth of your town. You know, a a a big, a a bigger town, lots of development coming in, you know, that's gonna, it's, it's probably gonna happen more frequently. Some towns do it every three years, some, some do it every five. You know, Buckfield. It hasn't, has, Buckfield's probably grown more in the last five years than it has in the last. Fifteen. So, I mean, that's a contributing factor. The sales of houses at, you know, double market value or double what we say they're worth. You know, that that really has a detrimental effect on our state valuation and, you know. Our value at the state level from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Buckfield went up forty-two million dollars. Our valuation has stayed. The same. Relatively. And part of that, I. You know, the backlog of stuff. You know, the 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 backlog of assessments and stuff like, I get that, that does play a contributing factor, but we could have done. Every assessment for every building permit taken out for the last three years, there's not forty-two million dollars based off of the current values. It's just not there. So. This will. Pick up those ones that were missed. This will also identify the ones that have intentionally. Not been found. This will pick up. And it'll, it'll balance out those valuations so that, you know, we're in line, we're getting our full. Our full um reimbursements and. I mean, I really anticipate that just in the pickups. The pickups alone, plus the stuff that hasn't been picked up in years, is it it's gonna have a positive effect on e- everybody that's taken out building permits and done. Gone through the process of what they're supposed to do. And it's gonna. Put us at a spot where we can start fresh and start to move on. Are there gonna be issues? Are there gonna be? Are there gonna be mistakes? Yep, that's why the appeals process is there. That's why there's abatements. That's why we have these processes in line. It's not a perfect world, but. We're gonna be in a much better spot than we were before. And I just don't want people to. Think that just because of my assessment. You know, if you have a hundred thousand dollar. Property valuation now, and it goes up to two hundred thousand, that doesn't mean that your taxes are being doubled. It means our mill rates getting cut in half, and if the budget stayed exactly the same, and everything was equitably changed at the same exact time, you'd be paying the same amount with a lower mill rate. Some people will see a decrease, some people will see an increase depending on. Right.
Yes, Judy.
I have to a- answer their letter. They asked us to call. Starting today, the next two weeks, we set up in a plan, and what would you recommend?
I would absolutely call them. Um, if if you don't feel comfortable with them coming into your house.
I don't care. What 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 would you recommend?
I would absolutely recommend you call this, this one eight five five number.
If I say sure, come on in, would you, what would you say?
Whatever you.
If what you feel comfortable with. I mean, the only reason they didn't go into my house was because I was at work when they went to my house, and when they came back, they asked me the information while I was sitting here.
Am I correct in understanding that if Judy decided to say that she would not feel comfortable with that, they would then ask her a series of questions?
Believe they will do it over the phone.
Judy, I'm gonna call them and tell them they can come in my house. Yeah, okay, and if they're confused, I'll be to, I don't care, I have, I have.
And they may not even come in your house if you tell them they can. They may just come in and ask you a question.
Right.
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 I was at my house. And I was outside working. He asked me questions, not interrupt me working, and then he just.
Thanks, and it's just great, the letter. Was not very appealing, so.
So if I have any recommendations for town managers, another town that are gonna go through this process, write the letter yourself.
I agree, though. The wording was a little harsh, so we're, we're sorry for the confusion or panic that it has caused, but. It, that was not the intention. The intention is just to get everything squared away with K R T so we can move along with this process. In the best way we can for the town.
And and they may have intentionally done that because they anticipate that if they sent that letter out and said, hey, we need to schedule an interior inspection. There was four hundred accounts, four hundred parcels that needed a callback. And if they wrote the letter to. Let's just say the letter got attention. And people were paying attention to it. Had it not had some sort of like, you need, this is important, we, or, you know, some sort of, it's of an important aspect to it, that. Half of those four hundred people would have never even called, and. We'd be waiting months before we can finish this revale. So I don't know. I'm not them. I didn't write.
Good.
I should have written it better.
Thanks.
Next time, things will be so much. Smoother.
Guys, talk about a revale. It might be like.
Maybe this was the glitch.
I did.
The worst glitch we have.
Yeah. I did, I. Colleen, um, obviously had yesterday off at Oxford because it was President's Day, and I was working here, and she came in. To work yesterday, and we talked about Oxford because Oxford, K R T did Oxford. Um, I felt a little bit more positive about. Getting the information into Trio and the possibility that it might actually be able to be done before commitment. Uh, which makes me feel better. Uh, K R T actually did a lot of the data entry for Oxford, which. It goes that having to hire temps to do data entry, however, because of it, there were errors. So there was a lot of manual review. However, she did say that the bridge is is now actively being worked on. Because of the pressure that Oxford's put on them, so I'm hopeful that this might actually hit this next commitment, but. That's just the information that's been relayed to me. So. Uh, October fifteenth is about, I mean, that's when we committed this year, which puts it in line. I, that's like the latest that I'd wanna go because it only gives people a month to. Anticipate for their tax bill, so. The sooner the better, but worst case scenario, I'd say October fifteenth or October twelfth, I think, is what we did last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget? Yeah, we'll, this will continue for.
I would recommend that you take a. You 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 all look at it over the next couple of weeks, come up with your questions, concerns, whatever, even in the meantime, you can send them to me so that I can prepare. So that probably next meeting, we can spend a fair amount of time. Going through this. I think our budget meeting lasted about three hours. And Peter wanted to take a break, and I said, let's just rip the Band-Aid off. So, I mean, I don't think we can, we'll do that all at one meeting and maybe schedule. A sooner meeting than the the other one, just so that we can get through.